Section 108 loan program, and we will call it in at 6:30. Can we have a roll call? Oh, first, we have to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, we do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we can have a roll call.
Councilperson Bear?
Here.
Dupre?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salsito?
Here.
Zor?
Here.
Tobin?
And Mayor Higgins?
Here. Okay, we're here for a study session to look at a CBDG loan that the DDA is considering, and they'd like us to take up 50% of the loan. We'll have our CBD Director here to help us through, and we'll let the City Manager start it out.
Okay, so, yeah, as the Mayor had mentioned, so briefly, Section 108 is part of the CBDG program. This allows communities to take out a loan that can equal up to, I believe, three years' worth of a CBDG allocation typically used for economic development purposes. The DDA had been looking at potentially doing a major project in the downtown that involved reconstructing roads, and they were looking to use the 108 loan program to do so. The DDA itself has signed on to committing to 50% of the funding for the loan services, and they're requesting that the city take up the other 50%. And apart from that, we do, we've got Joan here to answer specifics on Section 108. I think our DDA Director might be on the phone as well. So, at this point, I can kind of open it up to the table for what you guys are looking for.
Okay, because I know I have questions.
We'll start with Lillian.
Okay, let me find my notes. First, as I was going through the paperwork, I was looking at the monthly loan amount, but nowhere in the paperwork did I see, like, how many years we were looking to do this for. Does any one know?
So, Section 108 loans are a 20-year loan, and typically, they're used for a development project that creates a revenue source. So, that revenue source is then put up as collateral for the 20-year loan. And that's typically how these loans are repaid.
Okay. I have, I do have a couple more questions. If I could just have a minute to find my glasses, because I can't read my own writing.
Well, while she looks for her glasses, is there any others have any questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
About where you summarize the loan program debt service with the 1, 2, 3, 4, the 5-line form right here. The one that's kind of in bold, where it says Hennessy Streets and Quant Alley, Victoria cost estimate plus 30%, I, what specifically is that? Because the first two lines, I recall from the initial proposal that came with these, but I'm not sure, when it says Hennessy Streets and Quant Alley, is that just a part on the other side of Fort Street that's labeled Victoria from O'Connor to Walgreen?
So, I cannot speak directly to this. This is Carl's proposal. I can say that I'm assuming that he, I will make an assumption, that he was putting together his numbers, calling it the Hennessy Proposal with the Quant Alley. Is that what you called it, right, when you just asked? So, I'm assuming that that is what he is referring to when he mentions Hennessy. I'm assuming he is referring to all of the Hennessy Proposal.
Well, so, yeah, I do believe it's the...
Are you familiar with his proposal?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the second line says total loan amount, 1.268 million, and then the streets and alley, 2.308 million, but then it says Hennessy Streets and Quant Alley, 1.52. So, that 1.2 and 2.3 added together doesn't give us 1.5.
All right, so Carl just called into my phone. So, I'm going to put him on speaker. Carl, if you could, if you, I don't know if you can hear me right now, but if you can, if you can mute your live feed that you're watching before I hit the speaker, otherwise we'll have an echo.
Live feed that you're watching before I hit the speaker, otherwise we'll have an echo. It's muted.
That sounds okay.
All right. So, Carl, I've got you on speaker.
Yeah. Okay, so I heard two questions. First question by Lillian, she was asking how many years. The debt service that I estimated on that highlighted page that was referred to by Jason just a minute ago was for a 17-year period, total debt service being 125,000 and change. I don't have that form right in front of me right now, so, you know, I'm recalling it from memory. With respect to Jason's question, that highlighted line that identifies a project are the Hennessy Street corridors on the west side of Fort Street, you know, of which there's seven to nine corridors. You've got the map there.
Yeah.
And then on the north, or, excuse me, the east side of Fort Street, we're talking about that Quant Alley, I don't know, it's got some crazy names. It used to be an alley, then at a point in time, it was rebuilt as a roadway to a traffic, and that's what we're talking about. The DDA last year rebuilt on its own dime the piece of the roadway in back of Melus Park, because the farmer's market had relocated there. But the road is still in pitiful condition. The part of the road from Arlington to the back of Melus Park is in bad shape, and then the part of the roadway from, in back of Melus Park to O'Connor is also falling apart and precarious. That, by the way, is the corridor that's used for the Cinco de Mayo Festival. So, it's got additional import and purpose for other activities that are held in the downtown that are pretty significant to the overall program and attraction to get citizens downtown. Does that answer both of your questions, Lillian and Jason?
Yes.
I still have a clarification question, Carl. So, you're saying lines 2 and 3 are added, those projects are added together in the fourth line that you have in bold, because, so, I understand, I understand when you combine projects, there's a cost saving involved. So, the cost goes from 3.5 million down to 1.5 million when you combine them?
Let me, I'm trying to open that up right now on my cellphone. Let me look at that again.
You understand what I'm asking, right?
Yes, yes, that's a good question.
Sorry about that. Jeez, what the hell. Are we still on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah, what that's doing, okay, the Hennessy, Quant Park was thrown in with some alleys, okay? I took Quant Park out and added it to the cost estimate for the Hennessy Streets. And, okay, wait a minute, let me back up. The first line just shows you what a million dollars over 17 years at the going interest rate costs. The Hennessy cost, or Hennessy Streets cost estimate are all the streets on the west side of Fort Street. Then, in the, there's that Quant Alley that's part of that 2,219,000 in, on the third line, that gets added to the Hennessy Streets to come up with the 1.483431. If you roll back into the cost estimates and you look at the alley reconstruction, there is a specific line item dealing with, where is that? Oh, jeez.
You have a line item for Victoria from O'Connor to Walgreens.
Yes.
Total cost, 203,000.
That's right. So, that's added to the cost of those other streets, and that's the total.
Can I interject for a moment?
Well, Carl, I'm, I don't think you necess, I, so, do you see the fourth line that we have in bold that says 1.54 million?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Is that the total cost of the project for the streets and alleys?
Yes. The road construction per se is 1,483431. There's credit subsidy fees and loan guarantee fees that are 59,000 and those in that number in the total cost of fixing those streets that are on the west side of Fort Street that run back essentially to Fort Park. That's what the cost is, plus that remainder of Quant Alley, or whatever you want to call it, Virginia.
You have, you have Victoria, you have Victoria on our paper. Okay, so, you understand the question, where, I mean, I was adding the 1.21 and the 2.21, and you're saying when those two projects get combined, it comes out to 1.48?
Right. Those other lines were other alternatives that the DDA was looking at. For instance, if we did all of the improvements that were cost estimated, the project could be as much as 3,700,000. We narrowed the focus of this project to exclude the alleys and to just be very specific on the Hennessy Streets west of Fort Street and Quant Alley, or Victoria, take your pick, on the east side.
You just said a very key phrase that I believe clears up a lot of it. You said it excludes all of the alleys except for Quant Alley.
Yes, yes.
And I think that's what all of us was wondering, how those numbers turned out. So, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. By the way, if the, I just stated something incorrectly. That very last line is if you did a Section 108 loan project that went to the fullest extent available based on five years times our annual CBDG. That doesn't represent any project.
Oh, no, we...
1.7. It just represents the total loan amount that we could access via Section 108. So, when somebody says, hey, we might have another project come along, I'm just making the point that, yeah, there's still some, quite a bit of Section 108 loan program available. That's one reason why we wanted to trim the project down. Actually, the streets and alleys are the line above the yellow highlighted, the 2.2 million plus 88, in other words, 2.3 million. Pardon me for clarifying that late at this point. I didn't have this open until just the last couple minutes, and I'm looking at it on my cellphone, which is a very tiny screen.
So, in other words, they're all examples of projects?
They're all examples, except the yellow highlighted, which is what the DDA has proposed to the City Council. That is, that is a project, as I said, for the street segments on the west side of Fort Street that run through the downtown and the, take your pick, Quant or Virginia.
Victoria.
On the east, or Victoria, I'm sorry.
So, Carl, can you only have one Section 108 loan out at a time?
No, you can, you can borrow more money against it if you want to.
No, you can only, you can, you can only borrow up to five times your current allotted amount.
So, if you haven't?
Right, but the problem with this particular project is that it's not a development project, and it does not, it is not considered collateral for this loan. So, you would, so the city would have to put collateral up, and my, my CBDG allocation, annual allocation, is not collateral for this. So, that's why this is traditionally used for development projects only, like a mixed-use building or rental, high-rise rental, or something along that line, something that can be repossessed, if you want to look at it in layman's terms, right?
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
A road and an alley cannot be repossessed by the federal government.
Well...
So, therefore, it doesn't count as collateral for this.
I do, I do have an idea of what else we could use for collateral once we get to that point.
We're pledging DDA funds and city funds for the project. That will cover debt service. If there are other issues about collateral, you negotiate that with HUD at the area office and the Washington DC Central Office.
So, Carl, can I ask you other questions?
Yes.
How long would this project take? If it takes 17 years to pay off the loan, how many years of construction are we going to see?
We can do it all at once and probably done in one construction season.
And on your page three of three, on one of your examples, you have notes.
Yes.
And it says, "Roads have very little catch basins on number two, and we need to carefully check and design future slope." Number four says, "Concrete drive approaches are included in alleys limited number of approaches." So, are these note items, are these going to be additional costs?
No, those are, those are notes that are included in the costs. Those are just explaining, you know, what features are included in each project.
I think one of my biggest concerns is that, does the DDA still support this even though your last day is coming up very soon?
Well, it's possible that there may even be some representatives of the DDA at the meeting. I think Leslie Lynch Wilson is there, and I think she is an active member. She's part of the Design Public Improvements Committee, and she could speak to her observation about whether the DDA is supportive of the project or not.
Well, that, I know DDA supports it because they brought it to us to discuss.
Right.
My question is, is now they don't have a DDA Director as of, as of what, June 2, I believe? So, who, who is going, who's going to take care of the paperwork and the reports that need to be filed? I don't think Leslie can do that.
Okay, I have told the DDA, and I've written it in the memo and, you know, this elaborate packet of information you got, that I am willing to put the application together. If the project gets funded, it'll have to be implemented through normal channels. That could be through the Community Development Department. They use Hennessy to implement CBD infrastructure projects as a general rule. Could be implemented through the Department of Public Services. I know that John Kazoo has implemented projects, again, with Hennessy, i.e. River Drive most recently. So, there's definitely internal capacity with the regular city departments to implement the project. My, my offer is to put the Section 108 loan program together and to submit it to HUD, both the Washington Office and the local office. There will be some requirements to amend the five-year consolidated plan. This project would have to be part of that consolidated plan, and it would also have to be included in an annual program. So, those are two other items that would have to be done.
Matt, I want to step in here and let just, let the council know, there are three members of the DDA here, four members of the DDA here, counting myself. I'd also like you to know that the DDA and the EDC have hired Brandon for a temporary DDA and EDC Director until a new Director can be found. So, they have, he has a contract to December, just so, just keeping everybody informed.
I also want to point out that I've told both the EDC and the DDA that while, while Brandon is in his interim position, I will help him along the way. If he has questions, he can use me as a resource, and I will provide proper guidance. I'm not going to do things for him, but I will provide him with good directives.
See, I really think that's interesting that Carl mentioned Hennessy to take the lead on the reports and things. Surely...
You're going to want to be paid for that.
Exactly, exactly, my point, exactly.
And I believe that Joan had something she wanted to add, something earlier.
About the collateral.
Right, the city would have to put up collateral in addition to what the DDA is offering. The way that this loan works is that when my allocation comes out, the entire annual payment is taken off the top of my, off the top of the CBDG. As the manager of the annual allocation, I don't think that this is a good use of funds, just to let you guys know. I am not in support of this project for a Section 108 loan. I think that there are other things that would definitely benefit the community better with this loan than, than roads within the DDA area. It's not to say that I don't think that the roads need to be done. I think that there are many other funding avenues that could be looked at to get these roads fixed, including, you know, using the money that they already have, that the DDA, EDC already has allocated to them that has not been drawn upon in two years. So, there are other avenues to getting these roads done that would not require going into debt.
Right.
And, and require paying interest on something that could be paid for through grants.
Joan?
Mm-hmm.
Would it lessen your concern if we were able to remove a majority of the burden from the CBDG allocation?
In what way? What do you mean?
Well, I know I've mentioned this before to a couple people, but last year, we did receive a brand-new revenue stream that we had never received before, and that simply the money we received for our two marijuana dispensary licenses that coming, that came in at 102,000, that just went to the general fund. So, if it goes to the general fund, that means we can spend it as we see fit. And when I looked at Carl's numbers, he's, he says the DDA will fund half of the 125 annual payment, so the city would need to meet approximately 62,000. And I don't know if, I believe the term is fungibility. I don't think we can specifically say we are directly allocating the marijuana license money to this, but we can essentially go, we're going, we're going to take the money from these licenses and use that to pay for this loan to reinvest in our downtown area. So, in theory, of course, there are no guarantees, but all we have is, I mean, one license is $52,000 last year, and 52 out of our, you know, total amount is 62,000. That's taking care of, like, 80% of the obligation. So, I think that greatly reduces the risk, but I don't know how the, how the accounting and the finance is worth between allocating a revenue here and dedicating it to this funding source.
I totally see your point, and, and I don't, please don't mistake my disagreement with it. I, I think that, yes, it would be wonderful to have that, that revenue source to pay for, for a Section 108 loan payment, not for this. I don't think that the roughly million dollars in interest that we'll end up paying just to get these roads done in one year is worth the one, an additional million dollars in interest, roughly, right? So, if I'm looking at, if I'm looking at making good financial sense, right, what would be the best thing for the city moving forward? Is it doing it all at once and incurring an additional million-dollar debt? Or is it doing it piecemeal over the next three years or four years and looking for grants where we're not paying an interest rate, right? That's what I'm looking at. And so, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer, right? Like, to not incur, if there are avenue streams out there that we can go after, why not go after the ones that won't incur an additional million-dollar debt?
Joan, what kind of grants are there out, that are out there that we could actually think that we could get to use for this kind of project? Do you know of any?
Off the top of my head, I know that the Department of Transportation has several grants out there. There's other funding that they're loosening restrictions on through COVID funding that hasn't been spent. I mean, there's always something out there. MDOT has several different programs going. This isn't the only way to get this work done, is what I'm trying to say.
The thing is, is the downtown area is crumbling. It's not viable. At this point, the city, the DDA, has to do something to bring this back to life.
Well, I...
If the DDA were to leave and not be here, it would be the city's responsibility. And I think at some point, the city and the DDA have to start working together to solve this problem.
I agree.
You know, I just, you know, it just goes on and on and on, and there's never any action taken, and I, I want to see action taken. I want to see something happen. No, I don't want to go a million dollars in debt, but I don't want to have the same discussion five years from now, 10 years from now.
Right.
And see it even worse than it is now.
And, and I'd like to say that the inaction is not my fault.
No, I wasn't meaning that at all.
And it's not, it has nothing to do with me.
I didn't mean that at all.
Or this. No, but I just, I just want to make that clear.
It's gone on for so long, we've got to come up with a plan.
And, and I agree, and, and I am very action-oriented, and I think I...
You know, and I've heard about grants before to do this, but there's never been any follow-through.
And I don't know why Carl has not explored other grant opportunities. I don't know. I can't answer that.
Can I answer a question that came up?
But I don't believe that this is the best...
You're not going to go back and forth between department heads. It's not happening tonight.
Yeah.
So, you can answer, but there will be no back and forth.
So, I, like I said, as far as CBDG, Section 108, I, I do not believe that this is the best way to use this funding. I don't think that these roads will, will spur the development that, that this money is intended to, or this loan is intended to spur, right? Because building roads does not bring jobs, it doesn't bring services, and it doesn't bring housing to the, to the city, right? And that's what my goal with CBDG is to care about the low-to-moderate income people of this area and having housing, jobs, and services for them. So, if this, if this project doesn't meet one of those three things, I can't in good conscience support it.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you. I appreciate...
And if it's a 17-year loan, we also got to think of it this way. Them roads are only going to last, at the best.
Exactly, right, right.
You know, 20... Them roads are only going to last, at the best, you know, 25 years.
Right.
So they're all going to fall apart at the same time in 25 years. So it's just, I'm bringing that up.
We're already in debt for the roads.
You know.
We are. We've, you know, we have our bond that's out there. Yeah. I have too many reservations about this.
Can we let Carl answer if you want to?
Now, Carl, if you have something to say?
Yeah. First of all, you know, the proposal is to rebuild the roads with concrete. The useful life for, for those will be at least 30 years. Okay, second, you cannot use federal highway money for local streets. I don't know if that's a dream or what, but you can't do that. And then last but not least, I just want to reemphasize that HUD's not going to garnish anything if they're being paid back. There's two annual installments that are typically paid, and those would be, as proposed by the DDA, a split of the $125, 50/50 between the city from whatever source it chooses and the other 50% coming from DDA revenues.
I'm, I'm sorry, that, that is not the information that I've received from my direct HUD advisors, directly from HUD.
We're not going to go back and forth.
No.
It's not going to happen.
I just want to make sure that you have correct information to make your decisions based on...
I, I do have one other factual question.
Okay.
The 3.977% loan rate, would that be amongst the lowest interest percent for all of the various loan options that would be out there?
Right now, that, the 3.7, I believe when Carl put that together, that was the highest interest rate at that time.
The Section 108.
Which is what I suggested that he base his numbers on.
Okay.
The highest interest rate at the time. So that could be higher today.
So, because I was wondering, if we were to pursue, you know, a loan from another entity outside of the CDBG, what, like, interest rate would we be, would we be looking at? Higher or lower?
So that I don't know, because this is a specific HUD program. So HUD puts this, what happens is the loan application comes through, HUD will give it a rubric scale, and then they'll put it out to the banks and lenders of the, of the community, right? And whoever decides to take it, they, that interest rate could go from, I believe at the time it was 2.25 to 3.77. So depending upon the lender and, and our credit score, right, would differentiate what percentage we ended up being charged.
Because, I mean, we all know right now, we're getting pressure from residents and the business community to do something to increase our, you know, make our infrastructure better in the downtown area so we can make it more attractive for businesses, residents, people driving, walking, you know, our food truck zoning ordinance that were, that is on the agenda. Not all of that is, you know, being stopped by our stubbornly persistent lack of quality infrastructure, and this is just one avenue to try to address it. That's all.
Anybody have, any other questions?
Can I?
I'll just add real quick while we're talking about interest rates. Our last road bond issuance, we were right around, right around this number. I think, I think it was like 375 maybe. And we were absolutely shocked because we were planning for about four and a half. And we came through luckily. However, that was a little while ago. Interest rates have continued to go up, and our bond rating is still not quite where we'd like it.
Well, I guess, and I absolutely respect your opinion, but as far as what's a good, like, risk for us to take with the loan is, as far as like how much in total interest we pay over the duration of the loan, is, is that something that our finance department would be able to give us a better clarification on if we go through a loan service that isn't a Section 108 loan? Or are we still going to be in about the same ballpark needing to make the same decision about taking on this debt?
So we'll probably be right around the same ballpark. Based on understanding now that this is a 17-year payoff, we're probably looking just shy of $600,000 in interest on this proposal.
I mean, getting a half a dozen streets done at once is, that's like a dream scenario in one construction season, but there's risk associated with that.
There is. If I could...
Yeah, go ahead.
We have, you know, we've been talking about the budget for, for a few weeks now, and tonight we're actually going to have the public hearing during the regular meeting. We have had to dig into the general fund to balance the budget. Maybe not a whole lot, but we have. Am I right, James? I mean, I read your, your transmittal letter, and even though we're in good shape, we still dug into the general fund.
Yeah, well, we are budgeting to go into the general fund for capital projects.
Right. Which we need. There's a lot of things that we need, but one thing that stands out to me is that the revenue from the court will never go back to what it was because of the, what's that? The, the state did the court reform, reform laws. So we're not going to get that revenue back. So we need to be careful. 17 years is a long time. We should not be, you know, spending money that, in all honesty, that we don't have for, I mean, we have our, our road plan. Let's follow it. If we have extra money, we can add to that as we go. I can't see putting 17 years into little pieces of the street just around the downtown area, not when you've got streets falling apart throughout the city.
To the chair, Your Honor, if you don't mind. So Joan, in the DDA, obviously there was a lot of work in this, I understand. At Ford Street Emmons Plaza, things are happening there. At the Sears complex on Southfield Road and Dix, things are happening there. We are making strides. I'm stuck on this collateral. So I understand streets are not collateral. So you talk about something that you could instill. Do you have a counteroffer that would be...
My counteroffer would...
Downtown? Because I, we all agree downtown needs help.
For what to do with the, with the Section 108 funding?
Yes.
So Section 108 funding, I've talked about having, traditionally is gap funding, right? So it's something to entice a developer to develop a mixed-use building or, or put their factory here, or you name it, right? It's something to help bridge the gap so that it makes it more financially attractive for a company or a developer to do business in your city, right? It's not, traditionally, it's not the entire project funded with just this one avenue of, of money. Now, I know that Carl sent out an email with a, with a city in Virginia as an example. Now, in that example, I read the article, and the article had, it was, there was a private-public partnership investment in the downtown. We don't have a private investment, at least as far as this project goes. There's currently not a private investor investing in the downtown along with us, right? So in order to use that, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, right? That city to Lincoln Park. I could see, I have several ideas on what we could use this money for. You know, we could definitely approach several different developers with, that have shown interest in the city and discuss things that we want to see happen on the corner, on the Sears lot, for instance. We could approach them and, and ask them if they would consider a plan that we brought to them, rather than just waiting and seeing what they decided to do there, right? So there, there are things that we can do with this money. Again, it's, it's always traditionally tied to a development. So a brick-and-mortar building that, if it were to be repossessed, it could be sold and that funding could be recaptured, right? Now, whether or not you choose to put up whatever collateral of the cities to go ahead and do this, I just want to remind you, that's not a guarantee that this will even be approved, right? Now, the, all of, all of the information that I've gotten from HUD, and the people that I work with day in and day out, has been that this is not a project that will be approved for Section 108 loan.
That's my last question. Are we spinning our wheels here and they're going to say, well, no, there's no collateral stuff to do, so this project is shut down?
Yeah.
So that's why, why we even have this conversation. So I want to know legally, do, what, you know, is this legal to go forward with this or illegal? So if we vote yes, let's do this, we could be shut down and say it's illegal, right? Because there's no collateral.
It would be legal to apply for it, is whether they accept it or not. That makes the determination if it's correct or, I don't think we're going to get in trouble by just filling out the application.
No, you wouldn't get in trouble for applying.
Well, then, okay, then let's move forward. All right, let's go. Thank you for your time and energy, and I'm all set. Thank you.
Your Honor, if I could just make one more comment?
All right.
Because we have helped DDA. CDBG funds have been provided for, I want to say rental rehab of second-story buildings, right? For apartments?
Yeah.
So we have helped. But this one, this one, I don't know. This is just, this is too long. 17 years is, it's too long.
As I said, we have some DDA members here today, and I'd want to be fair to, first of all, so that I don't follow the council people, know all of them, I'd like to ask them if any of them would like to speak tonight.
So I just want to remind everybody that this is an important project, regardless where we find the funding because of the condition of the roads. And with the other project with, Lillian, you referenced the other CDBG project that the DDA is getting funding for to get new people to live in the downtown, we want the, you know, they want the roads to be in, in good shape and to attract the businesses and keep the businesses here. And this is only the tip of, of the iceberg because there's other parts of the downtown that needs, needs help. But if we don't do something, it's going to, you know, it could get so bad that we'll lose, lose businesses, businesses won't want to come here, we lose our tax base, and then we're not going to have a city. At that point, we all ought to just update our LinkedIn profiles because we won't have, have a city. So we need to make some hard decisions and figure it out because we need to redo these, these roads, and it has to be sooner than later. We don't have the time to do it piecemeal because we want new businesses like yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hey, everybody. My name is Daniel. I'm part of the DDA, also owner of a building in Lincoln Park, right on the corner of Fort and Arlington. I'm a resident, so I live here. Yeah, I mean, there, you got a lot of really good information. Appreciate your time. And you guys, I know you've looked at a lot of this stuff, you know, but with Carl, I feel like he has a good plan. I, I feel like he, you know, I'm just outside looking in, right? I don't, I don't see everything that you guys see. But I would say that in terms of, are we afraid? We should be. We should never sign up for something and not count the cost because that's foolish. However, there, there are so many more things that have not happened in this town because of the lack of buy-in. And I'm going to say something that sounds kind of rude maybe, but I feel like we're all, the city, the people is the city, but the council, and no offense to anyone that wants to say yes to this, is not for it. It feels like that area over there is a forgotten lot that no one cares about, and we should be ashamed for how we walk to this building, as beautiful it is and a historic thing, and not do anything about the streets and the people that are struggling. I'm talking to make ends meet. They have families. They got kids. I have children that live right there. I see what the people walk through. I've seen people fall on these roads that we were talking about. If we care about our town and the people, we'll do something. Yeah, if we use this money or that money, that's arbitrary, but we have to do something. If we leave tonight and we don't set a next step, we fail Lincoln Park, and you might as well get ready, get a brick, and I'm not trying to offend anybody, but take it over here in front of the historical museum and write Lincoln Park. That's it.
All right. Any other questions? Anything else? Okay. We can have a vote on a study session, so I will move to end the study session at 7:15.